Good evening. The February 14th, 2017 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. I would like to ask members of the audience to please remove your hats if you have them on. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the front table. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call roll.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Mr. Bobby James, District 3.
Here.
Ms. Angie Boynton, District 4.
Here.
Mrs. Beth McCall, District 2.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Heidi Mayer, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Stephen Lake, Board Attorney.
Here.
Mr. Mark Vianello, Executive Director, Vocational Education, please introduce the Career and Technical Education Coordinator and Southeastern Youth Fair ambassadors who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
Good evening. Dr. Mayer, good evening. Madam Chair and board members, happy Valentine's Day to you all and happy Valentine's Day to everyone in the audience as well. I get to introduce two speakers tonight. It is my pleasure. And our first is Mrs. Lynn Nobles. She is the coordinator for our career and technical education programs that covers our middle schools and high schools. Now, both speakers touch on two different aspects of career and technical education. However, and you'll see that in both presentations, we're talking about our students being actively engaged in real-world problem-solving, real-world hands-on situations. So I will bring up Mrs. Nobles to share a little bit about the Southeastern Youth Fair and then we'll go into the pledge.
Okay, I have the pleasure tonight to bring forward a couple of the students that represent our Southeastern Youth Fair. And I just want to introduce them and have them come forward and then I want to tell you just a couple of statistics about our fair. We have Kalen Kleckner from Westport High School. She is a senior and she's representing the FFA. Kalen? Reagan Thorson, she's from Bellevue Middle School. She's representing our 4-H chapters in Bellevue Middle School. And the 4-H chapter that she happens to be a member of is the Wild and Country 4-H chapter. And Riley Thornson. Just a little bit of information, we have over 1,000 students that participate in our fair every year. We have the largest youth fair in the state of Florida that is just deemed a youth fair. That means we don't have a midway or anything like that that draws people in. We have just purely an educational function and that's why we have the largest one in the state of Florida because everybody else that does have these fairs tends to involve the other stuff or brings other people in and we want to keep it educational, so that's why we do that. We have events that go from home economics, horticulture, arts crafts, swine, dog obedience, dog agility, horses, beef heifers, steers, rabbits, chickens, lambs, goats, barbecue competitions, tractor driving, public speaking, and plant science projects. We have over 200 different individuals that volunteer time at the fair totaling over 4,000 hours at the fair. In addition, on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, I believe, it might be Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, you better check the books that they're showing you, we have over 3,000 second-grade students that come out to our fair and tour, are doing like a little round robin through different commodity groups that are presented by vendors or commodity groups from Marion County. Our youth also help assist those children through those programs. And we have over $1.2 billion in Marion County's economy that is tied directly to agriculture. So we feel like it's a very worthwhile, great benefit. And at the end, Riley will help assist these ladies in giving you a program that tells about the different functions and a schedule of events, so we hope you can enjoy this. Now I'm going to ask Kalen to come forward and do the inspiration.
Good evening. My name is Kalen Kleckner and I'm from the Westport FFA chapter. However, tonight, I represent all FFA and 4-H students who participate in the Southeastern Youth Fair. I represent all students who win a blue ribbon or maybe even a buckle for his or her hard work. But I also represent the vast majority of students who work and hard but walk away without a physical prize. Instead, they gain knowledge, experience, and memories inside and out of the show ring. I represent every student who has gotten up hours before their classmates and friends in order to take care of their prized animals, as well as every student who spends hours on their tractor or searches wholeheartedly with her camera for the perfect shot for our photography contest. Every year, the Southeastern Youth Fair provides opportunity to participate in the local agriculture industry, as well as teaches students real-life skills. The Southeastern Youth Fair impacts not only students, but family members, countless volunteers, and community supporters. In just a few days, I will enter my seventh and final Southeastern Youth Fair as a student and exhibitor. Over the years, I've learned the traditional lessons such as time management, responsibility, and independence through my swine and cattle projects. However, the lessons that I value most are the importance of advocating for the agriculture industry, the appreciation for every act of kindness and help, no matter how small, and the desire to put forth my best effort. These are just a few of the lessons learned each and every year at the Southeastern Youth Fair, just as I am simply one student who appreciates all of your support and commitment to this effort. On behalf of all participants, I would like to invite you to the 2017 Southeastern Youth Fair, coming up just next week and kicking off this Friday, February 17th, with the county carnival. I encourage everyone to come out to the Southeastern Livestock Pavilion in order to witness agriculture, leadership, and fellowship in action. Thank you. I would now like to introduce Ms. Reagan in order to lead us in the pledge.
Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
So the girls, Reagan, Riley, and Kalen, will give you a program and a schedule of events, and we hope to see you at the fair. And please, if you're at the fair, if you will, you know, wave at me or whatever, I'll make sure that the person who is announcing the event that's going on, make sure that the audience knows that you're there because it's very important for our students to know that you're there supporting them and they really appreciate that. So I would love to be able to make sure that everybody that's there knows how much you're supporting them and that you're behind our students. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Sir, you're showing a pig this year. What about a rooster? Is anybody doing roosters? Because I love the roosters. I am. Did you guys want to say anything or not? We did. Okay. Hey, we're going to move right along. Uh, Dr. Mayer?
I recommend approval of the agenda for the February 14th, 2017 board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording including as part of the official record of the meeting.
Good. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
So move.
Second. Moved by Ms. McCall and seconded by Ms. Stacy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the January 10th, 2017 school board meeting?
Second.
Moved by Ms. McCall and seconded by Ms. Boynton. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the January 19th, 2017 administrative briefing and work session?
Move.
Moved by Mr. James and seconded by Ms. Boynton. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the January 19th, 2017 administrative briefing and work session?
Move.
Moved by Mr. James and seconded by Ms. Boynton. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the January 24th, 2017 school board meeting?
So move.
Moved by Ms. McCall and seconded by Ms. Boynton. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the January 10th, 2017 school board meeting?
Second.
Moved by Ms. McCall and seconded by Ms. Boynton. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the January 19th, 2017 administrative briefing and work session?
Move.
Moved by Mr. James and seconded by Ms. Boynton. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the January 24th, 2017 school board meeting?
So move.
Moved by Ms. McCall and seconded by Ms. Boynton. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed 5-0. Mr. Vianello, would you like to share a recent accomplishment of the Career Academy at the College of Central Florida?
Well, good evening once again, and I'm going to introduce the gentleman who's going to share the recent accomplishment. As a principal, you're always, you always take great pride when you're able to land a very good teacher and bring a good teacher into your school. And Mr. Perdomo and actually his wife sitting next to him, I hired both of them at Marion Technical Institute. And the Mr. Perdomo and Ms. Bowman, they reside out at the College of Central Florida where they oversee and work with our students in the Career Academy at Central Florida. So many of you know the history of the Career Academy. Started back at Bellevue High School sometime in the 1990s with Jim Yancey as the principal. When MTI opened up, the program transitioned to our school, and that's when Mr. Perdomo came on board. And you'll recall that Doug Oswald, Buddy Oswald, for years, started the program and ran the program. He recently retired, and Mr. Perdomo was the natural fit to be Mr. Oswald's successor. And he is accomplishing great things out there with the We the People program, and that's what he would like to brag on this evening. So Mr. Perdomo, please come on up.
Thank you. Good evening. Happy Valentine's Day. And we also have a couple of students from the Career Academy here with us tonight. We have Brianna Britt, who is our vice president for our class, and Brittany Goins is our president, and Yasmin Bryan.
Thank you.
Roses are red, violets are blue, and we've got violets for you for this day for being here.
Very sweet.
We would like our relationship to grow, our program to grow. We've got our trophy. We're here to celebrate the accomplishment for the students. They placed third at the state competition and competed against some formidable schools. So what is the We the People program? I'm going to explain a little bit about the program, the competition. Not many people know about the We the People program. So I also want to introduce one more person. Carrie Bowman, our coordinator for the Career Academy. She spearheads our recruiting too. She's here tonight as well. I'm Frank Perdomo, and we are at the College of Central Florida. And we're also under MTI. We're partnered with Marion Technical College and Marion County Fire Rescue too, as well. All right. So here's a picture of the winning class. They competed against private schools, one of which went on to represent the state, has a tuition of over $30,000. So I think it's a big accomplishment. I'm very proud of them that they competed so well. And our goal is to eventually represent the whole state and win first place. So the winning team goes on to Washington DC and competes nationally. And this just happened in January, that we competed and won. So the We the People program, let's see, it was started back in 1987. It's the 30th anniversary of the program. It's federally funded through grants, and the Center for Civic Education is the main organization. In Florida, the Florida Law Related Education Association organizes the events, does professional development, great professional development for teachers, and they have some opportunities for teachers that are open right now to coming up. And so there's lots of research behind this program. I think it's one of the best civics programs. So they've done extensive independent studies to show that 36% of students score higher than their peers and 30% higher, actually, I should have said that incorrectly there, 30% higher on average than college students on comprehensive tests of civics, political knowledge. More importantly, this is what I really think is the best piece of research. 94% of these students that go through We the People continue to vote in elections. So that's a high percentage compared to their age group. So if you would like to see more of the research, I know we don't have that much time, you can check out jmlpresearch.org or flrea.org, the state organization. The current research is being done by Georgetown University, and there's a three-year grant that we're in the middle of right now that is funding the program. This curriculum is for all grade levels, so it goes down to elementary school, middle school, and high school. And we would like to see this grow and expand. The latest program is trying to reach more middle school students. All right, so a little more about the program. The students are broken into six groups, six units, and they become experts on a given unit. They have these complex questions that they need to answer, prepare statements for. This is one sample from the high school unit questions, and you can see it's multi-part questions. They have to show both sides. This is about the value of juries. So they prepare statements, and then they go before a panel of judges, and they act as if they're at a congressional hearing. And they testify, and the setup is about 10 minutes. They speak for four minutes with their prepared statement, and then they have follow-up questions the judges ask them that they're not aware of beforehand. So it's all right on the spot, relevant, real-world performance assessment is really what this is. And the scoring rubric that the judges use has six criteria. The most important one is participation. The students have to show full participation in each of the groups, and our class score is a combination of all the groups. So we win as a class. We also won an award at the state competition for professionalism for Unit 3. And in conclusion, I was mentored by Mr. Oswald and had training through Florida Law Related Education, and I am available to mentor other teachers, and I'm looking forward to expanding the program in more classes, in more schools. So thank you for your time, and we appreciate being here tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Stacy has a question.
Sure.
I don't have a question, I have a comment. I was fortunate enough to be a judge, and I believe maybe Miss King was also at different times. I judged the high school and I also have judged the elementary. This is the most impressive curriculum.
It is.
I know that in talking with the students that had taken the class at MTI with Mr. Oswald, told me that all high school students should take this. And I know that in our high schools, the history teachers can choose to use this curriculum or another one. I was told it's up to them. But I would love to see this, a district-wide history curriculum. It's incredible to watch these kids, the knowledge that they gain. And if you were trained by Mr. Oswald, he was the national winner also.
They did here in DC, yeah.
You know, up in DC, he was like the guy for the nation at a point with this curriculum, and he was just absolutely phenomenal. And I would like for our superintendent and curriculum people to look at possibly moving this to a required history curriculum in our high schools instead of just leaving it up to whoever can make the decision because, like you said, these are voters that go out. These kids learn, and I've really, I mean, even at the elementary level, I was just flabbergasted at what these kids knew. So thank you so much. And if you were trained under Doug, you are, you are top stuff. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other comments?
I haven't missed a year as of yet. I was there this year. I want to commend the judges that participate in this because they really bring a lot to the table. And I'd like to say this, all the kids that were involved, whether it was from Trinity or from all the private schools, it was an opportunity to see the best that we have to offer in reference to this, and it was tremendous competition this year. Thank you. Job well done.
Yeah, I agree. They're, when the judges, they're asked tough questions, and they perform wonderfully well, and they're knowledgeable and they understand completely what they're saying. They're not, there wasn't any fluffing and making things up as they went along. They knew. They do a great job.
I'm going to help you out a little bit on something. Judges, they need judges.
Judges, judges, they need judges.
So next year, next year, put the pressure on them to volunteer to come in. Okay.
Maybe give us a little advance notice so we can put it in our calendar.
Okay, put some pressure on them, guys.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, Mr. John McGowan, Director of School Counseling and Assessment, will now provide an assessment data update.
Good evening, Superintendent Mayor, Chairwoman King, board members. Thank you for allowing me once again to present some data to you. Unfortunately, the information I'm going to share is not as exciting or inspiring as Mr. Vianello's speakers, but it is important information that I want to continue to give you on a timely basis so that you are updated on how our students are performing. The objectives for my presentation is twofold. One, to provide the most recent reading and math assessment results, and we're specifically speaking about high school results, Algebra I and of course exam, and the Florida Standards Assessment, English Language Arts Reading Retake. So both of these assessments were offered, well, the ELA retake was offered in the fall, October, and the Algebra I and the course exam was offered in December. And again, to establish a baseline for you so as we move forward, you'll see the historical perspective of where we currently are. So for the FSA, English Language Arts. It's offered two times per year, one in the fall and one once in the spring, for students who have yet to pass the 10th grade FSA/ELA assessment, or transfer students who are coming to us from out of state or out of country, who have not yet passed the ACT or the SAT as a concordant score. And from the spring of their 10th grade year to the time of their, end of their 12th grade year, they will have five opportunities to pass this assessment for graduation. So I wanted to start back from the original FCADA in 2011, 2012. The third column, you'll see our district percent passed, so this is level three and above, so the students who pass the assessment for graduation, and the state percent passed in the fifth column. And you'll see in 1415, the first year of the FSA was administered, and then you'll see after that how the percentages stack up. So obviously, what you'll notice first off is the low percentages. When we, when I come to you at the end of each spring and discuss the FSA/ELA and math results for grades three through 10, our big assessment time, the numbers are higher. But keep in mind, this is for retakes. So these is for our students who, for graduation requirement purposes, have already failed this test once, and in a lot of cases, multiple times, and it's another window for them to retake and attempt to pass it. So you'll see for our 11th graders who took this in October, 21% of all 11th graders in the district passed as compared to 27% for the state, and our seniors, 17% as compared to 19% for the state. For the winter assessment was the FSA Algebra I and of course. This exam is offered four times a year, fall, winter, spring, and summer, again, for students who must pass the assessment for graduation who have previously failed it once or multiple times. Students who have decided to take the assessment to improve their EOC score, as you know, for all of our EOCs are 30% of the course grade. The students do have the option to retake the assessment to improve that 30%. For students who would like to cap, which is the credit acceleration program, for students who have not taken Algebra I and want to just take the EOC, and if they pass, they get credit, they have the opportunity to take the EOC for that purpose. Or again, for students who have not earned a concordant score through the PERT test, the post-secondary education readiness test. So again, similar to the ELA assessment, with the Algebra I, they'll have multiple opportunities from whenever they take Algebra I, traditionally in ninth grade. If they take it in ninth grade, they'll have 13 opportunities from that time to the end of their senior year to continue to retake and pass that assessment. Again, similar format, you will see our historical data from fall of 2015. I added the third column to point out the type of student who's taking that assessment, and you'll see the change over time. When it was first administered in the fall of, not, that's not the first time it was administered, but in fall of 2015, 100% of the students who took that were taking that for the first time. And as you go down to current winter of 2016, 87% of the students who took that were retaking it as they had already failed that assessment. Okay? So I wanted to point that out because if you notice the percent passed for our district, 35%, 41%, and then a huge drop, 10%, 10%, 11%. And the state, similar results, 35, 50, 28, 16, and 18. And that's because you go from a majority of the students taking it for the first time, whether it's at the end of the Algebra I course, to now, these are retakes. And for the spring assessment, you'll see different results. This is for the winter. So the students that are taking this assessment during the winter window are taking it for retake purposes. They're not at the end of Algebra I, taking it for the first time, they're doing it for retake purposes.
Can I ask a question here, Ms. King?
Yes.
When they're taking this, they have to pass, this is one of the EOCs they must pass.
It's the only one, yes ma'am.
The only one that they have to pass.
For graduation, yes ma'am.
Wow, okay.
Yes ma'am. And there's four windows throughout the year that they can continue to try.
Okay.
So again, very brief, but I wanted to provide you some updated data. That's our most recent state assessment data to continue to provide you information and a baseline kind of where we're at and where we're going to go forward. Any questions?
Okay, I have a question. Do we know the percentage of the retakes that are seniors?
For, no, but I can get that information for you.
I'm just wondering how many of these retakes are actually seniors and...
I can get that information for you, yeah.
That would be helpful to see if they're going to be able to graduate.
Sure, and that is a common question I get when we look at these percentages. If each test were only given one time.
Right.
And it was a 50% pass rate, then we could say, okay, well, that should equate to approximately a 50% graduation rate. And the reason our graduation rate is high, higher than the state average, is because it's offered multiple times. So as graduation requirements, if they fail it the first time, they'll have multiple opportunities. But I can get that information for you.
Just curious.
Yes ma'am.
Because what happens to them, they don't graduate?
Because what happens to them? They don't graduate.
Well, there are opportunities through concordant score for, through the ACT or the SAT, for the ELA or the PERT for the math. They can use one of those scores as a concordant score. But yeah, they will continue to, to try to take it to pass it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve Resolution 1701 requesting legislators mandate newborn testing for ALD?
So move.
Moved by Ms. Boynton and seconded by Mr. James. Is there any discussion?
That's a must.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed 5-0. Mr. Kevin Christian, Public Relations Officer and TV Media Productions Coordinator, along with Mr. Steve Hall, Marion County Deputy Tax Collector, Ms. Joyce Gilfoyle, Bellevue Santos Elementary Art Teacher, and mother of Donnie Schuler, Ms. Rachel Pio, or Pio, and his aunt, Ms. Cassandra Pio, please come forward for a reading and presentation of the resolution.
You all made quite the impression on our superintendent and our board. It's your last appearance here. And so, we're proud to share this with you this evening. Bear with me, there's probably some words that I'm not too familiar with, but I'll do my best, okay? This resolution reads, "Whereas adrenolucodystrophy, or ALD, is a genetic disorder causing damage to the myelin sheath, an insulating membrane that surrounds nerve cells in the brain. Whereas girls have two X chromosomes and are the carriers of the disease, but boys are most severely affected because they have just one X chromosome and lack the protection provided by the extra chromosome. Whereas as early as four years old, ALD can silently ravage a boy's central nervous system and can eventually cause blindness, deafness, learning disabilities, seizures, poor speech, difficulty swallowing, disturbances of gait and coordination, fatigue, increased skin pigmentation, and progressive dementia, leading to paralysis and eventual death. Whereas every 36 hours, a baby in America is born with ALD, and doctors often misdiagnose ALD for months, even years. Whereas newborn disease and disorder screening is a state-by-state matter, and only two states, New York and Connecticut, have enacted mandatory ALD screening for newborns. Whereas the cost of such screening is affordable, usually only $2.50 per child. Whereas a national petition to create Aiden's Law addresses the importance of ALD and as companion bills requiring ALD screening in all 50 United States so that when passed by each chamber of Congress will be joined as a reconciled bill and sent to the President of the United States to sign into law. And whereas the federal Aiden's Law, when passed, will override this state-by-state patchwork and screen all 399 million American newborns each year for ALD. Now therefore be it resolved, the School Board of Marion County, Florida, urges members of the Florida House of Representatives, Florida Senate, and Governor Rick Scott to fully participate in a state version of Aiden's Law and further the cause for national action to our country's full congressional membership. It's dated this 14th day of February, Valentine's Day, 2007. Signed by each of you proudly, I know." So, I'm going to present this to you.
Thank you.
And you're welcome to make any comments that you would like to the board.
I, I, um... Thank you. It will make a difference for other families. We're happy to be a part of this.
Would you have anything you want to say? Thank you for bringing this to our attention. Something such as $2.50 means the difference. And thank you for bringing that to our attention. I know Mr. Christian and Ms. Blockheder worked very hard to get this information that will be mailed out, I believe tomorrow, to our legislators to get our message out to them. So, thank you. Okay, I will now ask the board, the school board's attorney, to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight.
Thank you. In compliance with Florida's Sunshine Law, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or on a matter relating to school district operations. The school board has adopted these procedures to ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table near the door to this room. Public speaker forums are also located on that table. Completed forums were due to the school board's assistant no later than 5:40 PM. Madam Chair, I'll call tonight's speakers prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers cannot yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees must conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks, slanderous statements, and profanity are strictly prohibited. Unsolicited commercial solicitations are also prohibited. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they'll be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. Please keep in mind for future meetings that speakers can use handouts or AV presentations, but only if they're provided at least 48 hours prior to the meeting. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and their families is also strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention to these explanatory remarks. And Madam Chair, I'll turn it back to you.
Ms. Blockheder?
Ms. Helen Hamon, excuse me, Helen Hamel.
Good evening. My name's Helen Hamel. I reside at 3445 Southeast Highway 42, Summerfield, Florida, 34491. I'm coming to you tonight as a representative of Marion's United for Public Education. As you know, we fought valiantly for the referendum money. And we are very pleased to see the staffing plan allocating more resources to our smallest customers here in the district, which is our kindergarten teachers. We would also like to encourage you not to forget art and music and continuing to broaden those into our schools. Thank you.
Ms., Mr. Gary White?
My name's Gary White. I live at 9280 Southwest 96 Court Road in Ocala, 34481. Superintendent Mayor, Ms. Kelly, Chairman of the Board, and all you members. Many have not studied Common Core the way that our Tea Party organization has studied it, thanks to a few of you folks on the board who have brought the, the full problem of Common Core to light. Testing is just a kind of a issue that they keep calling up. And testing is just the beginning of the agenda of Common Core. Nationalist centralized indoctrination of our children. Please take care of each other, you folks. Take care of each other. You need to have each other's back for the sweeping changes that you, that are so necessary for our children. Put our children always at the top, as you have in your agenda. Thank you very much. You've been doing great.
Mr. Mark Avery?
Good evening Superintendent, Madam Chair, Board members. I'm Mark Avery. I reside at 3 Diamond Ridge Way, Ocala, Florida, 34472. And I'm the president of Marion Education Association. You're never too old, too wacky, or too wild to pick up a book and read with a child. So, MEA, along with our parent organization, the NEA, promotes reading. The NEA has Read Across America, and the Marion Education Association does a local promotion called Read to Scoop. We currently are, it's going on right now. Kids read a book and they can enter. But the cultivation of this event is at the library on March 4th, on Saturday at 10:30. And I would like to invite each and every one of you to come and participate and read to a child. Some of you showed up, came last year. I know some are looking forward to coming this year. And I think the superintendent said she wants to be there all day. It starts at 10:30. And you just, if you just come and say hello, come and read one book. My daughter's been doing this since she was about seven or eight. And she comes in every year, and this is, she's a senior, so it's her last chance to come for a while. So, it's a little bit different. But we'd like to invite you to come. And it's a good opportunity, NEA's been doing this for over 20 years, or this is their 20th year, to encourage students to read. And this is their program nationally to do it. And they'll celebrate it. A lot of places will do it on Thursday, on his birthday before that. But we, we celebrate it with the library. They're going to call it Sousa Palusa to go with all the other libraries. That's all I have. Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, C9.1 through C16.1, with the exception of item C10.1, which has been placed on the regular agenda for discussion?
So move. Second.
Moved by Mr. James, seconded by Ms. Boynton. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and those that oppose, like sign.
Aye.
The motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the 2017-18 version 2 of the district staffing plan and version 3 of the school staffing plan?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Ms. McCall, seconded by Mr. James. Dr. Mayor, please explain the changes that have occurred since the February 1st and 2nd work, work sessions.
Madam Chair and Board, I'm honored to introduce Dr. Hamm, who will give a detailed explanation of those changes.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here again this evening. You recall, we had separate work sessions on the district plan and then on the school-based plan. And I want to review with you the general operating conditions that we discussed at that time. And to give you an overview, and for those who, who don't recognize it, that's called GEOs. That, that satellite is a geosynchronous satellite with a multispectral scanner that looks down on the earth and helps us determine things like plant diseases and the like. This is a learning opportunity, so I thought I would throw it into the overview slide here. Today is the 47th workday for Team Mayor. And when you, you look at November 23rd, when we started in this role, we've done quite a bit in those 47 workdays. Now, I'm not counting the days they had a bag over the building during the holiday period when we were still working. But we started on the 23rd of November with what I called a symptomatic treatment of the patient to try to make our schools well and to aid our students in achievement and in growth and learning. For 2017-18, we have an opportunity to actually have a prescribed treatment plan. And the staffing plan is the first step in doing that. And what we are trying to do is to do the right thing, to leverage our resources and make the, the biggest difference we can make on student learning. This staffing plan that we bring tonight is not the budget. And I'll remind you again that we're talking about spaces tonight and authorizing us to have the structure that we think we need to go forward. When it comes to the budget, and we'll have several work sessions on that, we are still encouraged by the governor's announced budget request. And, and we monitor what's going on in Tallahassee and hope that most of that increase in per-student funding will come through to the district because we have important things to do with that funding. We will work to optimize our use of those referendum dollars. And as one young lady mentioned tonight, we are very much aware of the need to maintain the improvements we've made in art, music, PE, and media, as well as those other purposes for the referendum dollars, to recruit and retain high-quality teachers and paraprofessionals, and to strengthen our vocational program. And I think in the 47 days that we've been doing this, we've managed to touch all of those bases in bringing initiatives to you to spend those dollars wisely and to make improvements in those areas. We still await some details on grant funding. We're waiting next month to receive information on a major grant that will be helpful here. But we also expect that we're going to have between 250 and 350 retirees from the district who have been with us for a while. And when you replace those with new, young, energetic employees, there is a savings in terms of salary. And that process continues as we baby boomers fade away. Well, and since we talked about Dr. Seuss, I brought my favorite book tonight, which is Your Only Old Once. And I'm proof that that's not necessarily true, being a recycled old guy. But the reality is that many of my contemporaries will be retiring. And we're going to bring a lot of new talent into Marion County. And we're excited about getting them moving toward the goal. And the goals, as we discussed, are to leverage the resources that we have to drive improved student performance. We have reduced district-level administrative overhead. We want to bring specialized resources closer to the schools, and I'll address that specifically. Provide for increased teacher-student contact time, and there are a number of ways to do that. We are particularly concerned about our ESE teachers and giving them time to actually teach and work closely with small groups of special needs students. And we're doing that by removing some of the paperwork burden from them, and I'll address that. We want a highly qualified paraprofessional in every kindergarten class. And you're going to see an increase of about 69 paraprofessionals to be able to ensure that that happens. And then finally, allocate resources based on needs, not a one-size-fits-all model. And we'll speak to some elements of that as well. This plan does what we said we set out to do. And that is to bring those specialized resources closer to the area of need. It strengthens our response to a very obvious need in the community for vocational career training. And I want to add, they talked about career academies at Bellevue. But there, there's a career academy that even preceded that effort at Forest High School, and that was the EMET program. And I'm very familiar with that. And that has continued to be a successful program to fill a need in our community, young people blending high-quality academics and career preparation. We're adding a chief financial officer, and this is the first time for this job title in our district. We are consolidating that new idea of choice, that we are a choice district now in our third year, along with our magnet programs and our student assignments under a single director. This is going to be terribly important as we leverage our resources to create more magnet programs at the elementary level and more of those career opportunities at the secondary level and to be able to manage the movement of students around in the district. We've aligned our secretarial and clerical support based on need, both at the school sites and in the headquarters. We've increased the school-level staffing by over 60 positions. We've cut the headquarters staffing by 14. I want to talk about some specifics of the plan. And as you know, we did a work session in two phases. We started with the district-level plan and then went to the school-based plan. At the district level, we were able to eliminate four of the major administrative positions, even though we did create the new chief financial officer. We've combined some positions in the K-12 department and strengthened our ability to provide direct supervision of our people assisting out in the schools. And you already know that we have principals on assignment, who are included in those numbers, who are visiting schools on a daily basis. As of yesterday, our four principals on assignment had made 196 school visits. And during their time there, they are not only mentoring young, new principals, and we have many of them in the district, but also assisting with the supervision of teachers to help them get to that level of engaged teaching that we would like to see around the district. We believe it's paying dividends immediately, and we see over the long term that this is a great program, and we hope to continue that. The total decrease in staffing at the district level is 14 people. So we, in addition to the four administrative positions, there are another 10 positions that we phased out in our IT department, for example. Programming positions that now are no longer necessary and moving more to a model of providing support out in the schools of the IT function and economizing in terms of how we organize to be able to provide that. It's in the school-level staffing plan, however, that we see the greatest changes. And I've already highlighted two of those. For example, prior to this, we had resource compliance specialists whose job was to engage ESE teachers and maintain our oversight from the district level on the preparation of individual education plans for our special-needs students. We have increased the number of people doing that by 32, to a total of 45, what we will now call staffing specialists. And if you've been here for a decade or so, you know that we used to have staffing specialists. They will actually be in the schools. Last year and the year before, we got a lot of input from teachers, I in my old capacity, and certainly Dr. Mayer on the campaign trail, hearing about concerns that ESE teachers had for the amount of time they spend not only preparing lesson plans, but also meeting the paperwork requirements imposed by the federal government and by the State Department of Education for the preparation of those IEPs, for doing annual reviews, as well as IEPs on new students assigned to their schools. We are putting those people in the schools to do that. The teachers will still have some responsibility. Obviously, they have to provide inputs and have an intelligent discussion at an IEP meeting about where that child is. But the bulk of the paperwork, the preparation behind that, is going to be done by those staffing specialists. The other benefit of this, of course, is that, just as all laws are fluid, the laws that govern how we treat special-needs students change weekly from the federal government, from the state, in terms of providing that assistance. It's much easier to keep 45 people on top of those changes than 400 teachers, who, by the way, also have to teach while they're trying to keep up on those changes. We see this as a significant benefit of the staffing plan. I mentioned that we've added 69 paraprofessionals and rolling those out, so there will be one in each kindergarten class. Early childhood learning is a key focus of this administration. We spend a lot of time talking about remediating third graders and retaining them. We talk about middle-school students not being ready to advance to high school. If you engage the students early on and you take advantage of the early childhood learning abilities that we have in the classroom with a highly qualified teacher and, by definition, a highly qualified paraprofessional, we're much better off when those students rise through the grade levels and reach 3rd grade. And we have to start when they're young. And that's an important program for us, and we intend to maintain that staffing level to be able to do that. You'll see that we removed 20 positions from MTI, but those positions haven't gone away. Those are virtual learning teachers, who will now be in our alternative learning office, as opposed to MTI. So that's a staffing burden that we've taken off of the schools and moved it to alternative learning. We had, you'll see a decrease of 25 and 1/2, what are called resource teachers, but an increase by 55 of literacy, math, and science. And this is all with Title I monies. And this is reorienting and adding positions to be able to assist in the math and science areas, again, in the schools, and these people will be in the schools. You remember, last year, we had 20-some positions that were carried against the school staffing plan, but in reality, they were dispatched from the headquarters and supervised in a coaching sort of way. We're moving away from that model and actually putting them in the schools where they can make a difference. And they get to know the administration and the teachers and the students in that school, because they're with them every day. We continue to reduce the number of plant managers on the non-instructional staff, and you recall, you approved this last year, but delayed the implementation to give people time to apply for other positions. At this point, we have about eight remaining, and those people either have not been successful in becoming a head custodian or have chosen not to apply for such a position or a custodian position. But those will go away on June 30th, and we've had a year to make that transition. We have some who are going to retire and some who have already lined up other employment. But it's been an individual choice, knowing that they had now roughly 18 months advance warning that those positions were going to go away. And you'll recall that the plant manager functions are now being provided by our maintenance personnel on an as-needed basis in the schools. Plus, we still have the custodial staff in the schools to provide that portion of the old role. That's the one-over-20,000 view of the staffing plan. I've tried to highlight the significant changes. And subject to your questions, we'd ask that you approve that plan.
Or do you have any questions?
Yeah, let me, Stacy, go ahead.
Mr. James.
Okay, one of the things, first of all, let me say, I know we have some PE people in here, and I want to acknowledge you all for being in here. And I know you were concerned about the PE position. One of the things that I'm, and let me just say this, I had an opportunity to go out and listen to Dr. Mayer and her team last night out at East Marion, and I was very impressed with it. But there's some things I would like for this board to consider now. We looked at the PE program and the PE plan that we had last year, and we took the 2016, 2017, and we kept all the PE people based on that, and we had the money for that. The area that I'm concerned about more than anything else is that the service managers are the deans in the smaller schools. Okay, and I know that we may have come up with a formula, but if we, Board, I will ask the board to ask them to put those deans back into those smaller schools like Anthony, Spar, and all the rest of them, simply because when I look at what I heard last night, it was a combination of things. One, we are making a special effort to address all the needs of all these schools. When I look at the fact, look at the numbers, and that we're going by numbers. If A Street have 400 and some odd students, Madison Street have 450, and they have the dean of student services, then Fesenham have 406 and 7, but that one was taken. All I would like for us to do is for us to ask the superintendent to put those back in there and give them the same opportunity that we gave the custodial staff. We gave them a full year to look at what they were doing and how they could move and prove themselves. It's two different things here. I would like for us to really put some teeth into what we said last night. We want to, I really feel that if we allow those smaller schools to keep those student service providers, and we're referring to the deans, that will give us, give them an indication that we are looking at what is occurring out there at their schools. Because when you look at the numbers, you look at A Street, you look at Madison Street, and they have these resources in their school. Am I correct on that, Dr. Grantham? Do they have, do they?
I can address that. Can I speak to the PE issue first and then come to the student service managers? The, or did you have a follow-up question?
You can respond to the PE question for.
Okay. When we had the work session, we talked about a different model of physical education in the schools. And we also know that we have an abiding desire to return recess to elementary schools to provide some physical relief for young brains. And the question then becomes, is it necessary to have organized PE and recess to provide essentially, especially in the lower elementary grades, essentially the same thing? The second question that we raised was looking at the delivery model for PE, and we found a disconnect between the sizes of the PE classes at the elementary level and the secondary level. Our plan was to, by using professional development, better scheduling, and the addition of recess in the elementary schools, reduce the need for dedicated PE teachers in some of those schools. What we heard, and again, as we do a work session on the staffing plan, we take input from the board as well as stakeholders, and we talk to the principals at the schools. We heard that it's going to take some time to develop that new delivery model and to train people on better scheduling techniques and better utilization of the resources. So the staffing plan that you have tonight essentially uses the same allocation model that we used for 1617. So there is no change, as it stands right now, with the PE folks. And it gives us a year to, perhaps through attrition and through training and through better scheduling, reduce the total demand. It doesn't mean that we're going to reduce the importance of providing PE and physical exercise to the students at the elementary levels. So that's kind of where we are at this stage, moving forward into 1718. With respect to the student service managers, and student service manager is a job title that encompasses what we used to call deans, which is restricted to the secondary level, peer counselors, and a number of other titles that people got shoved into at the elementary level when they were not teaching in a class, but were helping with discipline. The idea is that we do two things. We strengthen the authority of the teacher in the classroom. Under Florida statutes, teachers have the authority to take disciplinary actions and to impose consequences on their students. If all you have is a special office down the hall, whose job it is to do that, you do two things. You weaken the image of the authority of the teacher in the classroom, but you also create a longer delay in time on target between a teacher and a student in the learning. Now, admittedly, we still have to have someone to intervene when student behavior becomes so disruptive that it interrupts the instructional momentum in the classroom. We call those people administrators. Principals do that, assistant principals do that, and in our larger schools, we have these student service managers to provide that. The plan that we've brought to you has a net change of one. We've decreased by one, the number of student service managers district-wide. But we've changed the locations where they are. And we found that if you have 450 students, perhaps the principal and the AP can provide that function while still providing support to the teacher in the classroom. On the other hand, when you get to 1,600 students or 2,000 students, you need more of those people, and particularly at the secondary level, where it's very helpful to have at least a male and a female student service manager to deal with those special needs that arise at middle school and carry on in the high school. You mentioned the 8th Street situation. 8th Street on its own is 400 and some students, I think it was 404 at the time we did the calculation. But what we looked at was the doublet of 8th Street and Osceola together with over 900 students, and it was just above the number for us to allocate two student service managers at campus. And we kind of treat it as a unit. If 8th Street was a standalone, away from the headquarters, away from Osceola Middle, perhaps it would not have a student services manager. But I know from talking to principals, and we have one here who, the principal at Spar, and she may want to weigh in on this, who's already discussed with her staff how they're going to handle dealing with student discipline in the classroom and with help from the principal and the assistant principal, without a student service manager at that school. This is a part of a larger plan on approaching classroom management differently district-wide and restoring authority to the teachers. The plan that we have, again, it's a net change of minus one in terms of the overall student service managers, but that's where we are.
Can I respond to that? When I look at, it's a different story for me, in the sense that I've had some experience in all of this. And when I have an opportunity for us to back up just a little bit and give Dr. Marion her program an opportunity to work, I would like to have the people in the outlined areas to feel that we have not turned our back on them by providing a dean, per se, at this school and a dean at Madison Street, which is a magnet school. They have a dean as well. Am I correct? Okay, so when I look at this, I'm asking the board to add these things back and give them a year to work out all the little details that they want to work out. The principals will do whatever you ask them to do. If you go out there and say, you will have this school by yourself with one person, they will do it. As a board, and being part of this board for a long time, I'm asking the board, based on what I heard, and last night, which was excellence, I want all the people in the smaller schools to know that this board is sitting here. We want to give them an opportunity to have the people on their campus that they had last year in the administrative capacity to work with the kids, the people that have ESE portables on their campus, the people that have the ranch kids out there as well. Because I will tell you this, working at a smaller school, you have a lot more difficulties than you think. Because a lot of you will say, well, they only have 360 some odd kids, so they can't possibly have that many problems. But when I look at the, usually, they have problems in terms of distance. They have problems with special-need kids, and they can't walk across the street and call and have somebody come out unless it takes 30 minutes. Board, I'm asking, what I'm asking the board to do is ask them to give these smaller schools a year, the same as we did with the plant managers. So they can come back to us at the end of next year and give them, give us a valid point on why they need this person or why they don't need this person, rather than just, we take it away from them, and we walk out there to them and say, this is what you got. And they will say, this is what I got, and this is what I'll make it work with. As a board, I'm saying, add them to it. Because we're saying that the budget, if we have the money in the budget, why not? That's what I'm saying. I'm speaking up for all the little schools that we were referring to, that we're looking at magnet programs and all of that for them out there and various things. So, boy, this is what I'm asking us to do, to ask them to put those back in there for this year.
Ms. Boynton?
Thank you, Mr. James, Dr. Hamm. Thank you, Mr. James. Dr. Ham. Um, your plan has, if the, excuse me, there are parents in our community, they have voted, uh, the referendum, and in that was for, for PE. They believe in the changes they were getting, they believe it. But understand, they realize that for this plan, they would like to get, as Mr. James did say, one year. I, I believe in PE for our children, and I think that is, that is why the parents got up and voted. They wouldn't have voted if it, if it was about our children. And so we need to at least, at least, make sure, I know we all, make sure that you would let them know we do have PE, but as you're looking at the plan that they have right, for right now, and for, I know some of the students that I went at, went out, some of the, the, uh, parents, excuse me, were expecting more to for, and what we had put down in the four hours, the money that I had put down for them, and all of a sudden it's changing. And so we need to, we need to, and sit down with them, as with, as well our, the teachers are, they need to understand, the plan is, is what everybody is ready for, if you understand. But if we were given one year, I'm going to join, agree with Mr. Mr. James to do that. Because as I, we voted, as I was out voting, we had to go out and talk to the parents, not, or just, just talking with our, the teachers in here. We had to go to the, to the community to look, that we had that. So, thank you.
Are you, are you talking about the PE or-
I'm asking for PE to change it, yes.
Well, we're leaving the PE, the PE will continue. There, we don't need a year because that's staying the same. They didn't make any changes to that.
Yes, they did.
Well, they, we reversed it.
They reversed it.
They did, okay.
Okay. So I just wanted to make-
Well, I have this, I have this from the parent, from, from my, some of my parents, the support. But listen, I will say what they said.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
But this is our, this is PE for the-
Okay, the PE is okay.
Yes.
Okay, now the student service managers is what I'm asking for, that we add that into the budget for the year.
Ms. Stacy, we're gonna move along to you.
Okay. I would like to allow Dr. Mayer to put her plan in place. Um, it is time for the teachers to be able to take their classrooms back. And in the small schools where we have an AP, I mean, in, there's some school districts that have taken the APs and shared the APs. And we aren't talking about doing that right, it's strictly the student service. We're leaving the APs at the schools?
We've added over a dozen APs to the-
So, in some school districts, they're actually, in the small schools, they're sharing APs. And so we have not asked to do, you have not asked us to do that. So the AP in a small school can serve the purpose of a student services person and an AP, and the teachers are taking their classrooms back. I feel that we should give you a chance with your staffing plan, and I know that if it caused any kind of issues, we can always add things back. I mean, we have, we have the option to modify our budget and modify our staffing plan if the need should arise. So, um, but I would like to give the teachers a chance to empower them. And the students see that the teacher, when she, when she says this is the way it's gonna be, that she gets to lay out the discipline and doesn't need to send them down the hallway to a dean who wasn't in the room at the time that happened and might not uphold her decision. So I would like to go with your plan. You've added many, many things in the classrooms to help us with the parents at the elementary level. You've returned the PE situation back to the way it was for this year, it will be for next year, so you've, you've helped us there. And honestly, I always wondered why at the small schools we had just as many administrative people as we had at some of our much, much schools twice the size. Never made sense to me. And I, I used to wonder, what are the APs doing? Well, now it looks like the APs will be helping out. So I'm, I want to allow Dr. Mayer and her team to put this school district together, because what we were doing last year wasn't working, obviously. The schools were not successful the way we did it last year. So the deans being in the schools obviously didn't help because the schools weren't doing well. So, um, let's make a change.
Ms. McCall?
Uh, Dr. Ham, when I look at the staffing plan, it looks like Anthony, Fesenden, Horizon, Reddick, Collier, and SPAR are where we're removing the student service managers. Do all of those schools have an assistant principal?
Oh, yes.
Okay. And have, and they've all, according to this, they've all had the student services manager prior to this staffing plan in sixteen seventeen?
In sixteen seventeen they did, yes. One, one thing I need to point out is the student service managers are instructional personnel.
Correct.
They're under that contract. We tried very hard to make sure that instructional personnel are in front of students teaching. And that's one reason why we removed the coordinators and replaced them with APs to build up that function in the schools. And that's one reason why we've put those staffing specialists in the schools to help with the IEPs to free up instructional time. So it's really, it's, these are interlocking parts of a plan to leverage our resources to make a difference in the classroom itself.
Okay. So, um, in these schools, you've met with all of the principals, and they're comfortable with the AP and-
No, ma'am. I, I would be a fool to stand here and say that every principal is comfortable with their staffing plan because they weren't last year with what they had.
I just want to be sure, I believe that the classroom teacher needs to have much more control in the classroom with discipline, and I like that. I think that will help with classroom management. Uh, but I don't want them to get so bogged down with discipline issues. I want to be sure that if we move forward with this, that, that they have support, and if there is truly a disruptive student in the classroom, that that student can be removed, be disciplined somewhere else, and so that the teacher can teach. I'm, I'm concerned about that.
And let me tell you, I have a little experience with assisting teachers and removing students from their classes. Under Florida statutes, a teacher may remove a child from their classroom, and that child cannot be returned to the classroom unless and until a placement review committee, which is required by statute, convenes and determines that there's no alternative placement for the child. That's a power that the teachers have. We would prefer that principals and APs who are highly trained and experienced in dealing with behavior issues wage into it before a teacher feels compelled to invoke the statute to remove the child. But that ability is there, and that's in the law, and we have used it in this district. You know, there are times when a, a teacher has issues with a child, and the parents will feel that maybe there's a personality clash with the teacher. And we, we always see our own children as perfect, or at least above average, and want to make sure that they're getting everything they're entitled to. But if we remove a child, and most principals, rather than having to go through the process to convene that committee to move the child, will just put the child in a different classroom. And then if the child has the same behaviors with two or three teachers, it makes a stronger case for us to convince the parents that something needs to change. It could be an alternative placement, it could be a special program, and, and it could be discipline. But we talked a lot about giving power back to the teachers to impose consequences in the classroom and putting instructional bodies that we pay out of the budget to teach in a classroom where they're teaching students. And that's, that's one of our overall goals.
So, Dr. Grantham, I will address this to you. Our teachers are going to have the tools necessary for the classroom, classroom management, discipline problems that they have. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We'll begin with Mr. James, and we'll get one more shot.
Okay, again, I'm asking for one year, that we hold on this for one year and put them in for one year. I'm not trying to say this, that won't happen, but I do know what I heard. I heard a lot of optimism last night. I heard a lot from people that saying the smaller schools in the smaller areas are being overlooked. And I want to send a message out there that we will, we will give them an opportunity for one year to make sure this thing is working. And then if we want to take, take, uh, take it out, then I can understand that. But to take it out and say it was not working before we, before they have an opportunity to say, this is what I needed for. Because they have, they have been working with, with, with deans and things like this for a long time. And I will say this to you, if you got a dean at Madison Street with four, with four hundred and some odd students, and Madison Street's supposed to be the cream of the crop, part of the cream of the crop anyway, what are we signaling to the, the smaller schools? Let's give them an opportunity for a year to work with this, knowing that at the end of this year, they will, they will be removed. When I look at this, when we had a day plant man, a manager, and we gave them a year, why, why can't we do this for our smaller schools? All I'm saying, the smaller schools need an opportunity. Now, is that gonna bust the budget? If we get to the point where, where it's gonna shatter the budget, and where we think we got some money there where we can fund these, is there a problem if we keep this with the budget? And I'm looking at Ms. Ellis back there, is there a problem with this with the budget? I don't know.
We haven't.
Okay, so we can put it in there then?
Well, yeah, let's not, we'll leave Ms. Ellis out if she wasn't prepared for that. So we're gonna leave that out, and we're gonna move along. Ms. Stacy?
This represents, as I'm sitting here doing the math in my head, and the benefits, somewhere in the neighborhood of a quarter of a million dollars with these four employees. And the reason the plant managers were left was for a whole different reason, and they weren't at the salary of these people. It's a whole different issue. There's not any connection. The, um, the deans will be able to have, find jobs, and they'll, they'll be fine. Um, like you said, you're, some of them are just moving around, you're not really, you're just decreasing by one. So it's a completely different apples for oranges comparison. But when you're looking at a quarter million dollars, fellow board members, to have an extra dean at a very, very small school, wherein many school districts in Florida, they have cut APs at schools, we are not doing that. We're leaving the AP to act as a dean if he needs to and help the principal if he needs to in the small schools. That gives us a quarter of a million dollars we can put directly in the classroom to put teachers before students and, um, and have someone actually boots on the ground. And so I do support your staffing plan, and that quarter of a million dollars going to the classroom, not to the administrative office. Thank you.
Any more discussion?
I'm good.
Okay, I'm just gonna weigh in a little bit, and then I think we're gonna decide. Um, I heard many things tonight, and actually, at the last work session, there was some, I am concerned when I hear that, you know, but Mr. Altobello came up, and he also expressed the concern, you know, because we don't ever want to take away from the classroom teacher. And if there is a disruptive student in there, um, you know, they do need someone to come in with the plan. What I hear is that there will be some other options and some things going on. I understand completely that the APs, you think they're the assistant principal, but they have a tremendous amount of responsibilities, a lot of things that they do also. So I ask if, um, we do vote as a board and, and support the plan, if there's any indicators that it isn't working, would you, you know, would we consider that, is what, as the board member I would like to ask?
I, I would not be hesitant to come back to the board and ask you to add positions to the staffing plan if they should be needed. And of course, it's appropriate to do that once we have a better feel for the budget. We're at a position now where we're adding more than sixty positions at the school level, and depending on how the governor's budget survives, the internecine warfare of Tallahassee, and, and how, what grants we can secure for school improvement, we may have to defund some positions in the already approved staffing plan. For example, I told you that last year they held back fifty instructional positions to adjust after the ten-day count. And, and those positions went back in as schools gained population and needed those basic units. This year, we've held back half that number. And if the budget doesn't work out the way we would hope, we may reduce that number as well. And that takes away our flexibility to be able to respond to population changes and stay compliant with class size limitations that are also imposed on us. There are a number of glass balls that we have to juggle at this stage. The state recommends a three percent general fund, fund balance, and this board has previously said they'd like to have five percent. If I come back to you when we're in the middle of the budget discussions, two or three board meetings from now and say, look, would you, would you let that go down to four percent? Would you feel good about that? That may be necessary to fund the staffing plan as we presented it to you. But we really don't know until we see the budget. And at this stage, we're asking for you to approve a plan that you can approve a change to at any subsequent board meeting. And I, I looked back through the record, last year, you approved a number of changes to the staffing plan on the fly. And I would expect that we might well do that this year too, especially since we're flying a new aircraft here.
Okay, thank you. I see Ms. Street standing behind you. Did you want to speak or-
I just wanted to possibly address a couple things. First and foremost, I do feel supported by our new administration. I also attended the, um, community conversations, and what I heard was that I can, whenever I need, I can come to my district leadership and I can ask for help. And believe me, I will. But right now, I've already started that process of talking to my teachers and putting the teachers back into the driver's seat. That's what we need to do. That's what they're asking for. We're gonna allow them to do that. My AP's here supporting us tonight. We're gonna be there to support our teachers, believe it, because that's where everything happens, right there in the classroom. And we're gonna be there to be able to support them. But I just wanted to, to just address that. I, I, I just feel like I'm supported. I think that my teachers are gonna, they know that we're supporting them too. We're starting that process right now so that I can support them and not wait until next year and say, gosh, what are we gonna do whenever we have a disruptive student? But building relationships as part of my school improvement goal, and that gives the, the responsibility right back to the teacher to build that relationship. They know better than anybody how to treat that child and what that child needs. It's gonna be individualized for that baby, and we're gonna be able to move things. So at SPAR Elementary, we feel supported, and we're gonna, we're gonna keep on doing what we're doing for kids.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Did you have anything else to add, Dr. Ham?
I, you've just heard from a golden apple teacher who's now a principal, and I think she hit the nail on the head.
And there you go.
Okay, good. Whoops. So we've had our discussion, so we're gonna move on to vote.
I mean, you have the motion green, which-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. We just got, caught up in the-
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye, and those that oppose, like sign.
Do you want to vote yes or no? How do you wish to vote?
I, I, I was just thinking about it. I said, give me one second so I can make my decision, and so, and my computer is down. Thank you. So I, I will vote this way. Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
Mrs. Stacy, I need your vote. Mrs. Stacy?
It says I'm voting.
And the motion passed for one. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that has a total value of thirty thousand, thirty-seven thousand, eighty-one dollars and eighty-one cents? So move.
Second.
Okay, moved by Ms. McCall and seconded by Mr. James. Got caught up. We also had the donations of one thousand dollars to College Park Elementary School from Be Smart Incorporated. Three thousand dollars to Dr. N.H. Jones Elementary School from Marion County Emergency Management. One thousand dollars to Denellen High School from the National Football League Foundation. One thousand dollars to Hammet L. Bowen Junior Elementary School from the Hammet Bowen PTO. Three thousand, five hundred, eighty-one dollars and eighty-one cents to Horizon Academy at Marion Oaks from C.D.W. Logistics. One thousand dollars to Howard Middle School from the India Association Cultural Education Center of North Central Florida Incorporated. Twenty-five hundred dollars to Lake Ware High School from the American Legion Auxiliary Veterans. Three thousand dollars to Marion Technical Institute from the Marion County Building Industry Association of Ocala. Three thousand dollars to M.C.P.S. Grants and Federal Programs from Public Supermarket Charities. One thousand dollars to North Marion High School from Marion County Children's Alliance Incorporated. Seven thousand dollars to Osceola Middle School from Patricia and Lawrence Kelly. One thousand dollars to Silver River Museum from Ernest H. Jernigan. Five thousand dollars to Vanguard High School from Herff Jones LLC. Two thousand dollars to Vanguard High School from the India Association Cultural Education Center of North Central Florida Inc. Two thousand dollars to Westport High School from Kiwanis Club of Ocala Inc. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ms. Stacy, would you like to thank? Well, wait a second, when it passes. Okay, and the motion passed five zero.
I would like to thank everyone that contributed to our schools and, and gave, when they could have given to so many different things and they chose the public school system. That shows how our community feels about our schools and the students that we worked so hard to keep in Marion County and educate to be some of the best brains that can go and win state competitions. And a lot of those dollars that are given to the schools offer teachers the extra opportunity to do some things that maybe they wouldn't be able to do had it not been for the kind giving hearts and the kind spirits of our community leaders and community members. So thank you so much for giving to us and I hope we can give you back a great educated student.
Thank you. The chair recognizes the board's attorney, Stephen Lake.
Thank you. Uh, board, I'm notifying you that advice is needed regarding the pending litigation styled City of Ocala versus School Board of Marion County pursuant to section two eighty-six point zero one one subsection eight of the Florida statutes known as the Govern and the Sunshine Act. I'm requesting a closed attorney-client session with the board for the purpose of discussing pending litigation and court action strategy related to this matter. I'll ask the board secretary to cause reasonable public notice of the time and date of this attorney-client session and the names of the persons attending to be published. It is suggested that this closed attorney-client session be held following the February twenty-third, twenty-seventeen Administrative Briefing and Work Session scheduled for nine a.m. As allowed by statute, only the following persons are permitted to attend. Kelly King, Chair, Beth McCall, Vice Chair, Angie Boynton, School Board Member, Bobby James, School Board Member, Nancy Stacy, School Board Member, Dr. Heidi Mayer, School Superintendent, and Stephen Lake, School Board Attorney. I'll ask a court reporter to record this attorney-client session also as required by statute. Her notes will be fully transcribed and filed with the clerk of the school board. Upon conclusion of this litigation, the transcript will be made a public record. Madam Superintendent?
I recommend the board hold an attorney-client session pursuant to section two eight-six point zero one one, section eight Florida statutes, to discuss pending litigation.
If there are no objections, I will instruct our attorney to schedule the attorney-client session to be held following the February twenty-third, twenty-seventeen Administrative Briefing and Work Session, starting at approximately ten-thirty a.m. Are we good with that? Okay. Gonna give some reminders. The Nick, the next Administrative Briefing and Work Session is scheduled for Thursday, February twenty-third, twenty-seventeen at nine a.m. The purpose of the work session is to review Wyamina Park Elementary School, Phase Three Construction Project, a contract template, and pupil enrollment, as well as the responsibilities of board members and superintendent. An attorney-client session to discuss pending litigation will immediately follow the February twenty-third, twenty-seventeen Administrative Briefing and Work Session discussions. Okay, and so we're gonna move along to, uh, board comments and concerns. And, uh, Ms. McCall will begin with you tonight.
Um, I wanted to congratulate the Public Education Foundation and all of our golden apple teachers, our Teacher of the Year for a fabulous, fabulous evening, um, out at Circle Square. It was, it was wonderful. I love that we celebrate all teachers at that event and, um, it was, it's always a very special, that, giving out the golden apples and then also when we announce our Take Stock in Children's scholarships are three of my favorite evenings, so. Thank you, Public Education Foundation, that's all.
Thank you. Ms. Boynton?
Thank you. I just wanted, um, uh, I was able to the, the youth career export and I was so excited. There's so many of our, um, teachers and so, so many of the, um, companies were out. And I was just so, it was just wonderful, so it was very good. So I just wanted to thank, uh, Judy and of course for you, I know, talking to her might be a little funny. But for Judy, it was so, it was really good and Mr. Mark. Yes, it was very good, so. And just to go, it was, they had like three different places for them. And as I, I looked and, and I saw that the students were so, they were so in, in, so into it. They were just, it was exciting, so I just wanted to say, thank you.
Mr. James?
I had an opportunity to go out to the science fair. And it was really interesting. I put on a badge, even though I was not a judge. And it was just amazing, uh, the attention that you draw when you put on a judge's badge. And the kids had, they had, they had some fantastic projects. And the one that really attracted my attention was the fact that, uh, driving at fifty-five miles an hour, you can save X amount of gallons of gas per se. And my question was to the young man, did it matter what type of car you had? And he said, "I only did it with one car." He only did the test with one car. But it, it's a, it's a, it was an amazing thing. And I want to commend everybody that were involved with that, uh, out at, uh, out at, uh, Circle Square. And I want to commend, uh, the staff for those town hall meetings that y'all, y'all really did. It gave me a vision of what you, what you all are trying to do. I'm gonna say this to you again. The kid, the people in the smaller school districts have heard all these wonderful things a lot. But when we do something, then that make it seem as though we are really doing something. This is why I, I had a problem with that because I wanted to send a message to the people out of East Marion and the, and the people at Spar that, that, that their kids do matter. And if we have it in town, we can have it out there. And that's, that's important to me. So when you see this, I see me, uh, doing something like that, the little guy is what I'm saying. And I look at the people from Spar and it took y'all a long way to come here. And I appreciate you standing up and saying what you're saying. But I'm for the ones that didn't have a chance to say, "I just need some hope." And I think what we heard last night was hope. We gotta send a message tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Stacy?
I would also like to thank Dr. Meyer and her team for the community meetings. It is incredible to sit and listen. I went to one of her earlier ones and it was like people were in disbelief that they actually were allowed to have an opinion and have a voice. And I believe, uh, the attitudes and just the general feeling of the school district and the hope, like you said, I think it's obvious. I think it's obvious. I think I feel it when I'm in my, in the district office, I feel it at a school. And I'm looking forward to the youth fair. As most of you know, I'm an animal person. I am an agility person, that's what I do. And I'm looking forward to that part of the youth fair, um, seeing the four H kids and some of the kids that are doing their, um, agility because I am a big competitor in that. And so I look, I'm just very, very excited about seeing the kids as beginners being involved in that. And so I just, there's so many great things in this district and there always has been. And I guess it's just a, sometimes we just need a little change, a little change of direction, some new thoughts, some new people. And I want to thank the principals and I would like to thank our leader, our district leadership for bringing back some real positive things that's got a lot of people excited. Thank you so much.
Mr. Lake, Ms. Vlaketter, Dr. Meyer?
Thank you. Happy Valentine's Day, board. The cupcakes that were here upon your arrival, um, they got cupcakes tonight, are, were made by the culinary students at Marion Technical College under the direction of Chef Vitali. So, um, just be safe and know that I did not bake them, so they're safe to eat, they're safe to eat. And again, um, greetings to all of you. And we would like to congratulate Mrs. King, as we got the email that Mrs. King is now a Florida School Boards Association Certified Board Member. So congratulations to you, we're very proud of you and your efforts. And, um, you, you do us proud. There's been a lot going on since our last meeting. I attended Reading Pal Volunteer Thank You Luncheon, which was so exciting because you know, reading is so important. We had the Purple Heart Reserve Parking Ceremony at Hammet Bowen, of course, the golden apple. We finished up our community conversations last night at East Marion. And again, thank you, Mr. James, for being there. And Ms. Stacy, you were at, um, one earlier, but it was, um, under, um, the direction of Mr. Christian who got that all organized. So thank you for that very much. Super Bowl, um, and we'll pause for a moment when we think of that. But, um, we had our own soup bowl here and Mrs. King and Ms. McCall were there as judges, as well as Sheriff Woods, the mayor, and, um, thank you, and Mr. Yancy, yes. And it was very exciting. Our team each made, um, pots of soup and it was a blind judging. And Denise Vitali, she was the winner of that, she had a seafood chowder that was fabulous. There was a be a reader celebration at Maplewood on a Saturday under the direction of Beth Abel from Title One. Five points of marathon, a kid's life marathon that was held and that was benefiting Life South Blood Centers. We also, Mr. Vianello and I accepted, um, from the county commissioner, a proclamation in honor of, um, National CTA E Month. And we have, Mrs. King and I went to the, um, board meeting, the Central Florida Public School Boards Coalition Meeting with that. And there's been some, um, we were on radio with W O C A and the Sky and just as Mr. James said, just getting that message out, getting that message out. So, tonight's book, we only have one tonight. And it's always a great opportunity to give a gift of a book for any occasion or to receive a book, um, as a gift. And this book was given to me and you see, it's, it's a little worn, it's very loved, it's very loved. And this was given to me by a colleague and, um, who's become a dear friend. And this book was her favorite book growing up because she had such a challenging childhood. And in this book, it's called The Pony Engine, but it is the little engine that could. And she said it's what got her through her childhood with, um, the mantra, "I think I can, I think I can." And, um, goodness, that, that engine did make it up the hill and did bring the animals to the children so they could see it. So, uh, just a message, um, not only loving a book so that it looks like this and having those memories from childhood. And I'm so honored she gave this to me and it's on a shelf in my office to just remember that, "I think I can, I think I can." But more importantly than that, I would just like to say to our students that, um, you can. And don't ever let anybody tell you you can't because you can. You have a superintendent, two deputy superintendents who know you can. You've got a district office full of people, a school board who knows that you can. And to finalize this quote I found, it says, "What the best and wisest parent wants for his own child, that must be the community want for all of its children. Any other ideal for our schools is narrow and unlovely, acted upon, it destroys our democracy." So I'd just like us to keep in our hearts that what we would want best for our own children is what we're gonna bring to the forty-two thousand children here in Marion County. Because we can.
It's always hard to follow Dr. Meyer with her nice foot. I also, um, had a chance to go to a science fair out at Reddick, it was a couple of weeks ago. And Mr. Leopard was there and, and Mr. Climber was there. And, um, it was just really neat seeing all the, the, their projects and talking to them about how they came up with their ideas and to see where they're going. So, um, that was a good time. I like to hear that kids matter, not like it, but I love it, because that's our mantra, the kids matter and they come first. And with that, I've also heard about confidence in our, our staff. And I have complete confidence in our staff. And, um, earlier today, I, I do Reading Pals. And, um, when I was there, I have a chance to go around and visit it a little bit. And I had a chance to speak with Ms. Dicky and, um, she's, it was actually a few of them and they were telling me what they're doing. And what they're doing is they're doing, uh, lunch bunch with their students. So when they're having lunches, they'll pull them and talk to them. They have their small reading groups and have a few different things that they have going on. These are the administrators working with these students. They know these students personally and they're developing these relationships with these students. So after what I heard today, I have the utmost confidence that they're gonna know their students and, and, um, develop these relationships, which they already are. And, um, I just wanted to share with that. And also they, um, pulled me into mentoring, so I'll also be doing that. So maybe you could mentor in your schools or be involved in the lunch bunch or the Reading Pals and stuff like, oh, yeah, yeah. Because there's always that need and it's just good. Also, I just want to tell everybody, happy Valentine's Day. And I want to thank the staff and I want to thank our superintendent and everyone for loving our community and your students. And, um, without everyone in here and out there, every one of our staff members, this district would not make it without you. So, thank you. And we're gonna move along. Okay. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge the board members have received the alternative placement list for students through January twenty-seventh, twenty-seventeen. Ms. Vlaketter, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter? May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of students J.D. seventeen through forty-nine, J.D. seventeen through fifty, J.D. seventeen fifty-one, J.D. seventeen fifty-two, and J.D. seventeen fifty-three with educational services through the first semester of twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen school year?
So move.
Moved by Ms. McCall and seconded by Mr. James. Was there any discussion? No? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In the motion- And the motion passed five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student J.D. seventeen fifty-four with educational services through the entire twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen school year?
So, move.
Moved by Ms. McCall, seconded by Ms. Boynton. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the motion passed five-zero. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Moved by Mr. James, seconded by Ms. Boynton. I'm sure you're gonna vote yes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed five-zero, the meeting is adjourned at seven-twenty-one.